Because I knew we always did.
All right, guys, it's seven o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Andrea.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Ross.
Yes.
Nancy.
Yes.
Eric.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Here.
Okay, upcoming legislation. Mr. Bill?
Got two here. Does anyone have any questions on either the warning sire or the resolution oh nine two two four, the third package you're packing?
Does everyone realize on that oh nine two two four, it'll be a second reading in the last meeting, you understand what went wrong?
Yeah.
Yes.
My mistake. I apologize for that. So I was still thinking we was down to five people and we officially had six, so we didn't have enough to waive the readings. So that was all me. So it'll be up for a second reading. And also, they wanted the answer. I checked the date by July seventeenth. So since we're having one more meeting, I put it down for a second reading.
Any other questions on that? Okay, the next thing up is the noise ordinance. Bill has put a packet together for us. He's gonna give it to us at the end. We're gonna take them home, look at them, and discuss it at the July meeting.
Yeah, I should just throw it out there now.
Okay, one pass it down. Each councilperson, one for Dawson there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody got one?
Yeah. Yep.
Should've made enough copies. Okay. Couple of comments to start with. Number one, I've got to prosecute whatever ordinance y'all come up with, and the chief has to enforce. Yeah, so I asked chief to sit out there because it only gets appropriate to get public comments from chief or from my office when we're basically the legal entities enforcing it. But I wanna go through with you what my thoughts are. First of all, this ordinance was passed in January of twenty twenty-two. So you're about two years out. There've been no legal challenges to the ordinance. No one has come to court and said it's unconstitutional. No one has said we're enforcing it in a selective manner. No one has otherwise challenged it. Change it. Obviously, that opens up a can of worms. Our police department, from what I have seen, has enforced the ordinance as it's written. The county sheriff had some questions. Chief wrote a memo in May to Captain Reilly and told him that he is to enforce it as is written, which took away any questions that the sheriff had or may have had about the statute. Despite the ordinance being less than two years old, y'all have contemplated editing it. I asked for comments from everybody. Didn't want any names attached, and I haven't attached any names. The public comment that you all have sat through has basically been these five points. First is not in my backyard.
Yeah.
Second is people saying there's no noise issues. You guys are just being overprotective. Don't legislate noise. The third is trucks are too loud, the autos are too loud, the motorcycles are too loud, the bands are too loud, the special events are too loud. So you've got both ends of the spectrum. We also heard complaints that you have to apply this evenly to commercial establishment and special events. The statute is written, applies equally to permitted liquid establishments, home residences, and special events. If someone was to read the statute, they'd know that special events are covered in the same hours, same general statute. We've had requests for more enforcement, and we've had requests from establishments saying we need less enforcement and we'll take care of it. So everyone knows Wendy and chief put together a response to a public records request from the bar owner asking for all noise complaints against local establishments over the past two years. We gave them to them. They were all one location. The chief also asked the county to put together or pull all of its reports. The complaints are coming from, we believe, three locations within the village. They're mostly dealing with doughboys and/or complaints coming from outside or motorcycles going there too. The public records requests show, at least to me, that, you know, twenty, thirty complaints over two, three-year periods, not a lot for a village. You're gonna have noise complaints. You're simply going to have them. So what is it that we do? Well, we got all of your comments. One comment was, you know, let's enforce it between the hours of nine PM Monday through Thursday and ten PM Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's currently ten and eleven thirty. You guys are the legislators. You can determine the hours that you wish to enforce it, but that's one area that you may wish to enforce. Another comment was, let's limit amplified sound within premises, so no one is outside. Problem I see with that is anytime you have any kind of special event, it's amplified, it's outside. So when you attempt to overlegislate on this, you're gonna cut your knees out on other items. Someone asked to see other ordinances. I attached two similar villages at B and C, which is Granville, the village of Granville at B, and the village of Yellow Springs at C. Take them home, look at them, see what other villages of similar size do. Those villages also have annual events and parades and events downtown. See what their chapters say. I've litigated in both areas of the state on similar noise ordinances. They are what they are. Other comments that I received confidentially was we need law enforcement to enforce the laws on everything, including the motorcycles, the trucks, the cars, the audio systems, the house parties, you name it, not just local establishment and festivals. When a call comes in, our law enforcement's going out and investigating and shutting it down. They're not prone to write as many tickets for a noise complaint. If they show up, I'm sorry, officer, didn't realize. Boom, it's done. And that's really what you want from your law enforcement and from the village, in my humble opinion. I also got a complete edit. It's attached as Exhibit A to the statute. Someone worked through all of the changes they'd like to see. And that's something that I want you to take home and I want you to read. I do have a concern that you're going to sour the special events and the men's clubs and the festivals if you overlegislate in this area. Understand that special events are called out for in your code, and there's a penalty in the code as against the special event holder. I've had requests to delete the distances in the code, which is a hundred feet in Section B one B and twenty-five feet in Section E one. Look at those. See if they make sense. There was a reason that somebody wanted them in two years ago. If we want them out and just say, if it's noise and it's emanating, we're gonna tell you to shut it down, then let's amend it. Let's take it out. I also received comments on, should we have these handheld things that are decimeters? I think it's a little bit superfluous. I'm gonna have to have an officer come in and testify. It was loud. I could hear it. All the neighbors could hear. We had complaints about it. To try and measure it and try and make sure that the measurement is accurate so that you can go to court, I think is senseless. If it's loud, it's loud. It violates your statute. I don't think you need a meter to tell you that. Based on these comments and what I have attached here, I just think that, you know, you all, and I got comments from most of you, or I talked to others of you. I think you need to sit down, read your statute, read the proposed amendments, read what other villages of your size are doing, and then just take a common sense look at it, right? What do we want to do? Do we wanna really control noise to the point where it's just a no fun zone? Or do we want ours enforcement and everything to be evenly and equally applied against businesses, homes, drivers that come through here, and festivals? That's what you have in your current statute. Could you, can you improve every statute in your book? Yes. I think you saw from the public comments that people are invested, not only in the village, but the businesses in the village. And they don't wanna be told that they can't play any music outside. What if they're playing music and it's amplified on the back porch of, let's say, the new Mexican restaurants going in? Right? So I think it's common sense. I think we have to take a step back. You all took the temperature of the residents, and you all made some really bright comments. Now, I think we've got your homework packed. So go home with it, and then let's discuss it in public, and we'll put together any edits that you all request. But I just want you to read this packet, think about what I said, and think about what you saw the last couple of meetings. And then I wanna talk about next on the agenda, the solar panel legislation. I could put together a similar packet on the solar panel. I don't know that we're advanced enough to need, and when I say advanced enough, I don't know that you have that many people with solar panels. I think the big thing that y'all are worried about and should be worried about is a solar panel farm coming in. That legislation would be easy enough to put in place, but are you really worried about residents putting solar panels up on the roof? And if you are, then there's a couple of things you need to think about. Number one, it has to be an application process. So it's gotta come in through Jim. Number two, they have to comply with fire code. You have to have so much room on each side. You have to have an entrance plan and an exit plan. That means I'm gonna put them up, and if I leave, I have to take it down, once again, because it's a fire issue. You gotta notify the fire department, gotta meet code, and you gotta have a quality installer. So if you wanna put a code together, I think you're going to increase Jim's workload on the solar panels. I know you will, just based on other entities that we represent. And it's, do you wanna go through that process? It's gonna have to be an application process, an approval process. Someone's gonna have to check on it, and then the fire department has to get copies of it. And the only thing that I heard that people wanna legislate is front or back of the house, how far up off the roof, and do we want ground mounted? And there's, you know, form legislation out there that I can get for you all from pro and anti-solar concerns. I just, I'm just not sure where you guys wanna go with it. I think part of it goes to, you know, when your committee meets, do we wanna legislate solar panels for our residents right now or do we wanna wait? Then the last comment I'll have is, one of these larger entities that was going to move in, one of the businesses, was going to put a number of solar panels on the roof to try and self-generate. And I don't know that you ever wanna legislate that away, someone having the ability to come in and basically generate enough electricity for all of the electricity they're gonna need for some of these entities that are going to just suck. We hunt up power.
We also, what kinda brought some of this up to the forefront, it actually started, I wasn't concerned with the roof mounted so much, is we've got the property up at Lane.
Yes.
The Lane property, they are wanting to bring in ground-mounted solar panels, and they ask, do you have any type of legislation in place or anything? They're looking at, I believe it was seventy-nine acres of ground-mounted solar panels. And it's not for a solar farm. They would be using it all on-site, and as the site develops, they would continue to use it on-site. They're not looking to put it in and sell it back. But that was a significant number. And yeah, seventy-nine acres of solar panels is a, it was back behind everything along the side of the river. You probably wouldn't see it from the ground.
If you take twenty-three down the porch, you will see solar farms on each side.
Oh, my.
I've seen them.
So, and when they, when I spoke with the developer, he said, is that going to be a problem? And it's like, let council figure that one out.
Couldn't we just legislate the commercial side? Let the HOAs worry about the residences? Because they'd have to have that on a major site plan if it's a commercial place, and we'd have to approve that, correct?
I think the only thing would be the ground mounted for even the business.
Yeah, I don't want ground mounted.
Yeah, that's the problem, and I hear you, Eric, on trying to keep the corporate out. The problem is, is you're gonna get the challenge. You're letting XYZ Corporation put three acres on their roof. Well, yeah, it's their roof. Why can't I put it on the ground as a commercial user? Are you applying the law unequally between me and him? Or this corporation and that corporation? And can we fight it? Yeah. Is it a lawsuit waiting? Maybe. It's just, are we as a group sophisticated enough to wish to implement a complete solar code or a limited solar code just for residential now, commercial later, or just for commercial now, residential later? I'll leave that to you all to discuss. If you want legislation drafted, we can do a little bit better than the one pager that we've got. But I just need to know from you all, we want solar legislation for just residential, just commercial, or we just wanna prevent a solar farm?
Definitely don't want a solar farm.
Does the, do we have a definition of a solar farm?
That's a good question. I don't know that it's defined anywhere, but that's what the developers call them. And what happens is they take away the farmland and they put solar panels in.
They don't take away, it's sold to them.
Yeah. Well, I mean, but you're, you're taking away what's the commercials use where the taxes lower.
Well, my, the thing that sticks with me is your comment during the meeting. Do you wanna be in the business of telling people what they can't do with their property, with their house? And that led me to believe that you had concern of the legal challenge.
There, I have seen legal challenges. I haven't litigated them, but I've seen legal challenges too. You can't tell me that I can't put a solar panel on the ground at my house. I'm collecting energy for my house to run my Prius, to run, you know. So yeah, people do challenge it.
How does it fare?
I haven't studied. I really haven't studied it. But it's, it goes back to the, can you take away my property without giving me just compensation?
Well, they don't have, you know, they have to have a certain percentage of, like, green space. So if they don't have it, then they can't put it on the ground.
And that's, that's a different application. That's an application of, you have to have ten feet, ten feet, thirty feet.
And it's only a certain percentage of your property.
Right.
And so far, I don't believe anybody has, but in a ground-mounted solar panel in a residential district. That hasn't happened yet.
In this part of the country, those don't do very well because of the angle of our sun. Because after that meeting, I called and I talked to a couple people. That's what they said. They said you shouldn't have a problem with ground mounted because where you're at, they're not gonna get the proper angle to get the most anyway.
But yeah, like I said, the only reason I brought it up is we've got a developer wanting to put some in. And he made it quite clear, he wasn't putting it in as your traditional solar farm to sell it back to the utility company. It was all, so I don't know if you want legis, is that how you would go about limiting a solar farm bill?
Yeah, some entities, governmental entities, have said you can put as many panels down as you want, as long as you're not reselling it.
Yeah.
There you go.
The problem is, anytime you sign an agreement with AEP, Southern Power, it says, if you generate more than X power and it goes into the system, we buy it back at twenty cents a kilowatt hour, right? It just says that as part of the contract that, hey, I'd like to add a contract. No, you can't. That's our standard contract. Sorry. So it's, it's a lot bigger issues than I think we're ready to deal with. I do think that your group takes a look at it though, Jay. And then you come back and report to council on that and other development issues, so to speak.
Do they have a definition of a solar farm? Because I mean, people are naming acres.
That's what I hear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I'll speak, I'll speak louder next time.
I don't know that there's a true definition of a solar farm, but, you know, in common parlance, it's a number of acres of solar panels replacing farmland, right? Because that's all it's doing, is replacing farmland.
Yeah, I mean, if you can put a, I don't know if you can put in the ordinance where you can't see them or they're not able to receive them.
Well, I think, I think Eric's point was really the right way to go with this thing, is that we have something that is very specific in parameters for residential, but then, you know, we have to approve the natural plants. We have to, you know, get final approval for these things.
They have to show it on there.
And it should, we should be able with, with some strategizing, we should be able to figure out, okay, this'll work, and approve it or not approve it. I think we ought to be able to have that latitude.
And you do have HOAs that restrict the use and the location.
I think all of ours are in here, but one that I checked with had something about solar panels, and most of them don't allow ground, you know, anyways, because it'd be too tall. Be over four foot high. The ones that they weren't sure, but they were checked, yeah.
And I just, if we don't have a problem, then we want legislation. But I'll leave it to you guys to further investigate it. Tell me what you want.
Is there a timeframe, Alan, on when we would have to have something to affect that property one way or the other, or not affect it?
He was, he'd just ask, if I tell him, hey, it becomes part of the, part of your major site plan, it'll have to go in front of council. And I know I can't ask you to vote or anything else. Do you see a major problem? I mean, I think some of you are kind of aware.
Yeah, no.
And if not, like I said, it's not like he's taking up farmland because it's already been zoned for industrial. So it's not, it's no longer farmland. The farmland's gone.
Yeah, and that's where I think.
And he's not looking to sell anything back.
Right. And we don't really care if he does, as long as he's using some or, you know, most of it on that.
He said he's not gonna be able to generate enough for his own use. So he had.
I get that.
The way he explained it to me, that he would have to sell some or install some additional equipment to be able to sell it back, and he's not putting, he's not gonna spend the money on that.
Right.
But like I said, I'm sure that's part of AEP's contract on everybody, and that would make sense also.
I just think we have legislation to deal with the residential, with the lot coverage and all that, so.
And the HOAs.
Yeah.
And not a significant overuse at the point. I mean, it's expensive. It's expensive to put in.
And we are kind of at the point with the direction we're pretty much going with zoning, and I think we're eventually gonna get to the point is when people are wanting, coming in wanting permits and stuff. If the footprint, if you put, wanna put something on your lot and it doesn't increase, or doesn't take up additional footprint of your land, if it doesn't make a new footprint, why do you need a permit?
Right.
I mean, and because what's coming up now is we've got people who have installed decks, and five years later, they wanna come out and put a perla on top of it, or they wanna put a little awning on top of it. It's not taking up any additional yard space. There's really nothing for Jim to go out and look at. I mean, because he hasn't marked the ground. There's nothing to mark, but it's all involved with the county and the building department at that point in time. So do we really wanna keep requiring accessory structure permits for something that we just walk out and say, well, okay? I mean.
Want to get a recon for my roof?
You and a bunch of us sitting here.
Well, see, that's the other thing. The only other part of that is that our code also relates to height at certain points.
Right.
But nothing, nothing like you use as an example would be impacted by that.
Yeah, so we're kinda at that point where, like I said, we're looking at some stuff, and I'll probably be coming back or talking to Bill, trying to put something together. Just, we've got stuff in there where we charge a permit if you do a structure change.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't change the footprint, but yet you're tying something into your house, you're, you have to go to the county and get that all approved by the zoning code or by their building code.
Like, it's building permit.
So it's kinda like, why do we need a zoning permit? Because it doesn't really, it's not affecting the zoning.
Because the only thing I would wonder about that is, is the building department, is what we do here with zoning, is that a trigger for them to know that something's going on?
I don't think so at all because.
The county permit, they have to pull, they have to get county inspection as opposed to.
But I'm just wondering, I mean.
They, they don't know when we, when we accept a building, a zoning permit. They don't know when we get one, and half the time, we don't know when they get.
Okay, I thought, I thought one of those copies went.
To the auditor's office.
Auditor.
That's it.
So the auditor knows, hey, there's been an improvement.
Okay, that, that was the answer I was looking for. Thank you.
Anything else on solar panels?
Well, the only thing is, if somebody puts them in, is there any way that we could make sure that they let us know so we can share that information with the fire department?
To install a solar panel, they have to meet the NEC, the National Electric Code, and they have to meet the fire code. So the fire department technically is supposed to check
Okay.
all installations, because there's a lip on the roof and a side of the roof that they have to be able to get onto. And they have to be able to check the connections, and the fire department has to be able to keep a record because certain of them you have to hit with foam, certain of them you can hit with sand, certain of them you can hit with water. But that fire department has to know because they can't go out and blow the blaze.
So they're already made aware somehow?
Yes.
I would think that would be the county would be notifying the police department or the police, the fire department when something like that goes on.
Okay.
They should be, if they're not, they should be.
It could be something on the list.
Keeps us out of the.
Whoever's putting it in, they know what they.
Installers of solar panels have to follow NEC.
Yeah, that's what any followers are gonna know.
I just think we'd be at an insult to injury if we went down that route personally.
Okay, moving on. Annexations and water service.
Yeah, that was confusing.
Yeah, I see this map of Walker Point.
At least we'll pull something up.
Yeah, it's very similar to that one there. What we have is, we, we act, yeah. What we have, there is a county auditor site, and we've got these two parcels of land right here that are outside the village of Commercial Point.
Yes.
And if you, if I flip back to the other one,
Right.
you will.
The water line goes halfway down the road.
I just closed the other one. Anyway, let me tell, let me show you here that. The water, the water line comes down to the edge of this guy's property right there. The sewage line for all this stuff is up here on, in front of the houses, not behind them.
Right.
When this guy down here, I guess years ago, wanted water, and he was outside the village, his wells was going dry, he was told if he wanted water, he could run it down there to him. Well, his connection was all the way up here. So he paid to run a line from there
Correct.
all the way down Walker Road, and to get to his house, well, we have a village requirement. If it comes to your property, you have to run it across the entire front of your property. So that's why our water line stops right there on that side of the road.
Yep.
So he has water.
Yep.
At that time, he was not made to sign an agreement, or we can't find one, that says if he ever becomes contiguous with the village, he has to be, be willing to be annexed. Because right now, we have legislation in place that says, in order to get water or sewage, you have to be in the village. So he's not contiguous at this point in time. He paid to run his water line down. It was evidently a favor or whatever. He paid a bunch of money to do it. And there is an agreement that says if anyone adds on to that line, coming down through there, he will get a percentage of his money back based on what it is. Well, that agreement has ran out. It was only good for, what'd you say, within ten years?
Ten years.
And the tenure has elapsed on that, so that part of the agreement's gone.
Are we charging one point, whatever percent?
We are.
For water?
He's getting the township rate and not the village rate, point zero zero eight two cents per gallon.
So he's.
Our village is point zero zero six six.
So he's getting two hundred and zero percent.
So he currently gets water. Well, after he got his water, this house right here wound up, they wanted water. And the line was already in front of their house, their family, I guess, at the time. So they wound up capping in. They became a water customer. The problem is, when they became a water customer, as you can see, they own this entire parcel, which is contiguous to the village of Commercial Point. But he was never made to annex at that time. And so whatever reason, that's, that's where we're at now today. What they're looking at wanting to do, they, they being this guy right here.
Brand new owner.
They, brand new owner came in, he owns all of this, owns the one parcel. He's talking about going to the township and splitting out this little square up here and building a house there. He's wanting to get a lot split from the township and then build a house there. That house is wanting water. If that house gets water, if that becomes its own parcel, we have a law that says you don't get water unless you're contiguous. We also have, or unless you're in, within the village. That parcel, actually, all of this is contiguous to the village.
That takes sewer too?
The problem is, they cannot get sewer down there, because right now, the sewer line right there is the new fire department. The sewer line actually stops over, I think, on this side of the fire department.
Correct.
And the reason the fire department was not made to run it all the way across their property like we typically do is this was the high point in the ground, and because of that, it starts going downhill to these houses. So they can't gravity feed up the hill to get there, then to start downhill again. So the sewage line actually, the sewage line will stop, they were getting all the auditor stuff there. The sewage line actually stops right about there. So these houses down through here have no village sewage, but those two have water. The question I have for the council is this guy here, if he built, if he does a lot split with the township, and if he builds a house there, do we wanna get into the thing of selling water to people outside the village? Or are we gonna say you have, you're. Or are we gonna say you have, you're only, you're contiguous, you have to come in? Or do we even wanna sell water to people that are currently outside the village that we have no way of hooking them up to sewer?
Let me back up, back up to this now. You're saying he wants to split out, that's part of that. So if he annexes that lot, then it would be in the village.
So, well, he would, but then that leaves all this land here where they're also using village water. But that one.
Different time. Different time, different administration, different people involved with the thing, made decisions that we're, that we're gonna live with on that. And, you know, there's no, there's no regulation that says what we have to do or, or need to do. The only thing, the way the ORC talks about is that, that, you know, if a person needs water, that doesn't have supply water and they have access to a line. Then we're, we cannot withhold it from them. Now, I don't know, we could probably drill a well there, so that's not addressing that subject. If, you know, if that, that second house, I'm trying to remember that second house that was there. I, I think I, I think I read that when they added on there, they're having well trouble. And, and we couldn't stop the, the second one from, from accessing that line. There's, there's two properties that are side by side.
One wants to split, they would have well troubles though.
Well, that's, that was my, I'm, I'm trying to remember, because that was before, that was between my times. I wasn't, I wasn't on board then. I just remember reading about it when we extended because see, we have a watch, at the end of that line, we have a watch hydrant. It's just, you know, the only thing we use it for is to flush, because we need to keep the, the water fresh in there. So, so at the end of that line, we got a two inch watch hydrant. I don't know what size that whole line is. Is that a, is that an eight inch? I couldn't tell on my.
Um, in fact, I don't even think it says on the GIS. I don't even think it spells out.
How long ago, how, how long ago was this?
Two thousand seven, early two thousand seven. So I was new to the whole process too, so I didn't. Know anything about the, you have to annex to get the water. So yeah, that was all early two thousand seven.
We had somebody up on Front Street that we went past and they.
So what's the question Alan?
So my quest, I guess my question becomes, we've got the, um, the gentleman. Or we're, we're down here into, and right there is kinda like a look of a thing, not, that's not the auditor's map, but we got this guy here who's on water. We got this guy here's on water and that blue line shows our water line stops right there. And they're talking about if they go to the township and do a lot split. And we got that acreage, whatever that is, if they build a house there, will we sell them water? And I didn't know, like I said, we've got something in our code that says you have to be in the village to be a customer.
Didn't you say if you're contiguous, you have to annex? Is that what you said?
Some of the agreements we've had in the past say, if you're outside the village and we are supplying you water and sewer. And if you ever come, become contiguous, you cannot fight, we can annex you. You won't fight it. But we don't have an agreement with anybody there at this point in time.
The, the rate we're charging them at least, right?
It's a little higher. It's, it's, if you're in the township, you pay more than you do if you're in the village for water per gallon.
Uh, I just, like I say, I think the simplest thing would be say, hey, just, you know, split the thing out and, and, and we'll, and, and apply for annexation and, and you're on board.
If, if they do a lot split and they're contiguous, we annex them in and we tell them that's part of the deal. If you want water, you annex.
That's our current, that's our current ordinance. That's, that's.
They annex, don't we have to provide them with water and sewer? So who's gonna run that sewer line?
We don't have to, we don't have to. Sewer is not a, is not a thing that, that was included in the original plan. When all that was put together. That goes back to the Bob Beckman.
We're talking now, so if they annex now, do we have to?
They have no access to it.
Yeah, they'd have to have an access, something closer.
They have no access to it. We can't.
You can't come off of the Walker Point lines.
Right, right there, the green is a sanitary sewer.
Lift station and.
Well, that's my concern, they can't.
Between properties, you'd have to go between.
As you can see, it flows this way, it goes that and heads on down, up, over. And comes down here to the lift station on Walker Road. So you're looking, and this is all private property through here, so it's not like you're gonna pop out the corner and get to them. And those are all private properties with no easements or anything. We don't have a sewer, a convenient way to get sewer to him. It's quite a ways from his house. And the only way, as you said, would be, you'd be getting into putting in some type of little private lift station. And that's something you don't really wanna get into.
And he's just asking for water, he's not asking for sewage.
Making sure if he would ever sell it, nobody could come back to us and say, oh, you still have to provide them with sewer.
We're, we're at the point, we do have another resident in town that has water and not sewage and isn't that up at, uh, behind Pettits? Because there's no sewage line, actually, I pulled up right here.
That's correct. That is correct.
So yeah, we're looking right there, as you can see right now, there's Pettits. Market, these people right here are on water, but you see the closest sewage line is there. And there. So, and are they in the village? Okay, so they're in the village, but then they got water only because we don't have a sewage line within so many feet of their house or whatever you wanna call it. So we have done that before where we bring you into the village. I just, they called and I want something from council to know. First of all, if we're gonna tell him, part of the deal, we'll sell you water, but you have to annex. I wanna make sure council's willing to annex. I don't wanna tell him that and then come in here and you vote not to annex.
What are the pros and cons of annexing or not?
It, it, it's, it's nothing significant from, from our standpoint.
We, we would collect an income tax, his water bill would be cheaper. Oh, and he'd get trash service.
Just so everyone's clear. In order to annex, he must be contiguous, so we can never annex that property, that property, that property. Unless. Require the one that is actually contiguous now. And the smart move is always, if you're contiguous and you want services, you gotta come in.
Yeah, if you bounce over back to the.
The way the law's written, you can't create an island and you would create an island if the guy next to him wanted to come in and he said no.
So if we say no to this, then we could never go south on Walker Road, is what I'm understanding.
Are you saying to annex both of them?
They're talking about if he does a lot split, just annex that.
And they may, they may wanna, they may wanna look at.
To further annex down the line.
But just the option.
And quite honestly, it's probably the smart move for the lot split would be to annex it.
And we're also looking, if we would do something like that, I guess my next question is. It's like over here, these houses here are new houses, they're not in the village, but they got a water line part across the street. If they eventually come in, it would probably make sense. If they wanted water, we tell them, you annex, and we just bring them in. If they're contiguous.
Cause I got phone calls when those houses first started. And like the house four or five down wanted our water, so if you can get all your neighbors to come along with you. I said, we get to you, then you would be okay. I said, but you can't annex on your own, you're not contiguous to the property.
So that's just. Okay, so I'll tell them then that we'll supply them water if they're willing to annex in. And, but he goes to the township to get his lot split.
Because it requires, my, our code requires.
Okay, next, uh, fire department signage at Walker and seven sixty-two here.
Yeah, did we, did the engineer find anything out Alan? She said she was gonna check as to.
She said we could actually get into the point where if we wanted to do some type of additional signage and everything, or go down that road. I asked her to hold off on that, any of that stuff, because Walker Road and seven sixty-two, three of the four corners are outside the village. And I think if the fire chief hasn't, I think then the conversation should start with the fire chief. If he thinks there's a problem, he should take it to his bosses, which would be the township. And then if they need our assistance or wanna know our feelings on it, I'm more than willing to work with.
I like that.
But I don't think we should be initiating the fire department potential problems.
I, mine was just maybe a warning sign at the top of the hill, because I've watched a couple of times somebody coming down the hill. All of a sudden they pull out.
We've, we've went, when they started Walker Point, ten, fifteen years ago, I remember going to. I was talking with ODOT, trying to figure out how do we slow that down? ODOT's got a set of guidelines. And they're like, do the traffic study, do the count. We've kinda like, I, I think at that time the village did do its tra, or account. And they said, no, don't have enough. Here it is. And ODOT, and from what I've been told recently. They've got their guidelines on how they set their speed limits. And here they are. It's, it's one shoe fits all and you gotta, it's based on traffic count and curb cuts. They look upon that as one curb cut being one street coming in. Cause I was telling them when Walker Point was built, we got all them houses and that's before we had the second entrance. So everything came out Walker Road. And they're like, we don't care. You got one curb cut, you don't have enough traffic coming out there, it's fifty mile an hour. And I couldn't even get it down to forty. Now the fire department's there, if the chief's got a problem, I would suggest he go to the township and let them fight that battle. And for us, for this point in time, I don't think we've got a dog in that fight at the moment, if it's a fire department safety issue. And I, I agree, it should be slowed down. I tried to slow it down. I was unsuccessful getting it slowed down.
Get him to change the speed limit. I didn't know, like flashing lights, saying caution, you know.
You start doing that stuff, then I guess we would take liability if something happens with flashing lights.
Outside the village, yeah.
And like I said, three of the, up there on the map, you can see three of the four corners. I mean, you're looking up through here. Uh, that's township property, all that side of the road. Uh, I believe those two are township property. So you're getting to the point where not, uh, you know, in fact, we can, uh. Where is, as we back out of this, since we have this nice zoning map now. You can see right here is what we're looking at. And you will notice this area right there is Walker Road. And that there area is in Commercial Point. We don't own that side of the road for whatever reason, probably because we didn't want to annex where the bridge is. The map I see jumps over like that, so I'm guessing. That was it. So that little section's not in the village. None of this here is in the village. And the fire department's sitting, oh, it's sitting right, well, right.
One down.
There it is. Fire department's sitting right there. So that's not in the village, this isn't in the village, that one house right there is not in the village. But that, that is in the village. And then on the other side of the road, like I said, you can see we have a strip that's not in the village.
Yeah, that's on that.
I just think that's not a fight we wanna go into. If the fire chief has a problem and the trustees come to me and want our help, I'll be more than happy to work with them. Anything we can do.
Okay, next is the residence exhibit. Um, I asked for this to be on here. I went back and watched the meeting. And I actually drove, uh, Chestnut Commons today and he's correct, there's no speed limit sign. Um, I was kinda surprised by that. I, I think that we definitely need to get a speed limit sign up there. Um, I think you could, could use one over at Buckeye Loop. Around that area. Putting in all the additional stop signs. I don't know those really. I, I'm hoping the speed limit sign may help. If people see, oh, it is thirty-five. So I think if, if we get some speed limit signs in there.
Like, we're gonna change that street for one way.
No, because we're, we're not redo, we're not changing the speed or anything else and it's just, just putting up a sign. Yeah, so we're not making any changes on the speed, we'd just be adding a few signs.
Don't we have a speed trailer we can put there?
We have the one trailer, in fact, we was talking about that today. I told them, boys, get some batteries. They was gonna buy batteries for it and I said, well, how, how good are the ones in it? We don't know. So they sent it out here for the homecoming, but we found out real quick, two days. And I guess when they're brand new, they run like, uh, two, two weeks.
Better anyway.
So they, and it's based on how much traffic, but we sent it out here for the homecoming, yeah, and we didn't send it out till Thursday, it worked Thursday and Friday and then it was dead.
I get some solar panels on the fabric.
That was, that was discussed as well, so. But yeah, so that's, and we also talked about, I guess there was a possibility of getting some additional. The signs with the speed limit and the flashing and everything. That maybe the suggestion was made, we use the, uh, state, um, state street fund. Use that fund to buy some and take some, some of them that are on the state street and move them over to the side street. The old ones that we bought with general fund money. We put those over in the neighborhood and we replace these with street fund money.
Some of the new ones will actually give us car count and all that stuff as well.
I don't know that we need car count. I mean, it's.
But the difference is only like five or six hundred dollars.
But is, but if we start looking at these, there's a possibility we could do something like that. I don't have a problem putting up some more of those or anything. Or if we need to put in some, some, uh, twenty-five mile an hour signs. My only concern is putting in additional, having double stop signs. If they're not reading the first one, or they're gonna read the second one.
One of the other suggestions was speed bumps as well.
Do you wanna put in a brand new project and we smooth out the street and then you want speed bumps? You know, if, if we're gonna do that, just let the potholes stay.
There's a pothole right in front of my house I'd like fixed.
Email John.
Like they slow you down, but they don't kill your car.
Yeah, it's just.
Another thing they mentioned was the crosswalks. I mean, I did see, uh, that they could probably use repainted a few over there. They were, they were very. So, but that's all I really saw. But yeah, I, I just think getting speed limit signs in there throughout, you know, a couple.
I take it that road has been dedicated back to us?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Was there any certain places that you would like to see? Speed limit signs installed?
Um, yeah, like as soon as you come in Chestnut Commons, I mean, there's, you need one somewhere through there, the main route. There is, um, Buckeye Loop is kind of like a big, you know, it's kind of like a way, so a little over there would kinda be well. But I, I think.
I will, I will say something to John and have John maybe make up a couple of cheat sheets, two or three locations or whatever. And if anybody wants to add some more, whatever, we'll go there. That works. Yeah, the crosswalk should be painted, if they need painted.
Okay, is there any additional business?
Yes, I've got one item. The, um, men's club put up a brand new sign. I don't know if you saw it, driving back towards the school, it's kinda like on the, in fact, the school gave permission to put it up. They've got a brand new sign that says community, community center, commercial community center or whatever. It's on that driveway. They forgot to get a permit. Thirty-five dollar permit for their sign, not a big deal, but before I go and ask them to pay thirty-five dollars for a permit. I know in the church, in the school and everybody else, any other nonprofit group has put up a sign, we haven't charged them. They are a five oh one C three nonprofit. It's Commercial Point Community Men's Club Foundation. I'm sure the thirty-five bucks ain't gonna kill them, but is the village, is the village interested in waiving that? I know we can't vote tonight.
I mean, didn't you say the school?
So say it again, what'd you say?
So I think they'll tear it down and then have to get a permit and start again. I mean, they know, they know they have to do it right.
Okay, you're, you're noted. Next. We've done it for the school, we did it for the church, it's thirty-five bucks.
Yeah, I don't see why we would pick and choose if it's thirty-four.
I'd like Wendy to look and see what we did.
What?
Yeah, no question about all that.
It'll get paid.
I just want things to be fair across the board.
Discussion, I'll just pay for it.
No, I'm just gonna say this, because I wanna say this. There, you know, there are things that Jim will let slide. Cause they're his buddies. And I'm, I'm done with the buddy system. That's just what I'm saying. And, you know, whatever you guys decide is whatever, but everybody needs to be treated the same way. If they have to get a permit. I mean, I paid for two permits I didn't even need to get.
I agree.
Well, I, I agree with that, but I'm, as far as doing the same for everybody, like I said, the church didn't, the church didn't pay for their last sign.
If that's the way they did it.
Methodist church didn't.
And I just want clarification. And I just want clarification. If that's the way they did it, then that's fine. I just wanna.
Whatever we need to do.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I just wanted, before anyone started making a decision.
Yeah.
And the thing of trying to treat everyone fair.
Yeah, and that's fine, if, if that's how they've done it, that's great, if they do that. So.
Do we have any update on Addison? What's, are they coming back, are they done, or?
You wanna talk to Bill about that?
What's that?
Are you bringing us up an additional business?
Yeah.
Uh, no, we may have a, um, something to talk about at the next meeting, executive session, we're not gonna talk in open session.
Okay.
I just didn't know if I could get rid of all that stuff, or?
No, you.
Yeah, hang on to it.
You might wanna hang on to everything that you ever get, cause it's public record.
Well, I mean, not carry it, it's.
I would care if I were you, son.
I have a question real quick, um, before we adjourn, um, just cause I was looking through it. Um, for the noise calls that do go in, how do I recognize those on?
Should be investigated component.
On what?
Signal line.
Ah, okay. Thank you. That is what I had.
It's dispatched to the signal line investigation.
Okay, that was my question.
Just so everybody knows, July first, we have to have a public hearing for the tax budget, it's the normal stuff to start our temporary budget.
Yep.
So that'll be it. Um, what time you wanna do that, six forty-five?
I would say six forty-five.
Six fifty-seven.
That's more like it. Nevertheless, we're like waiting around, twiddling our thumbs.
Well, that's, that's true. If you, if you wanna do six fifty, that's even fine. I was gonna say, we don't have to change rooms, we're gonna be out there, so I don't have to run back here and change the setup, so however you wanna do it.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five and, okay.
The only last thing I have is, if you have, like, Eric, I was confused, cause I didn't know what you wanted to talk about. If there's anything for.
I didn't ask for it to be on here, I was just asking her about signs, but.
Oh.
Yeah, I, I was, I didn't know why.
Oh, so you didn't know why it was on there either?
No, I was like, maybe she came back with something?
I'm done.
I just asked her before the meeting to see where was, if, if that fell on us, you know, coming to, that's all I asked.
Cause I'm like, what is this?
Yeah, and I asked her, say highway money could be used possibly, and she said she would check, and then when I saw that, I'm like, oh, she must've come back with something.
Oh.
That we need to do, so yeah, I was.
But yeah, just, I don't mind if you copy Alan anything, cause I got, I said everything too, but I was like, what's going on, but knowing that you didn't know either. All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Sorry, Paul. On favor?
Bye.
Aye. Aye. All right.
On the water every place.
I know.